I'm scared of the dark. Right. They're right back there. Okay, I got it. I totally understand that. On behalf of the Pledge of Allegiance, place your right hand over your heart. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Any persons wishing to speak for public comment would dial eight 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 two five one two nine four nine or two one five eight six one zero six nine four. And this access code for today is eight zero nine zero six zero seven and press the pound key. Operator, are there any callers?
Just a reminder to the callers that if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items, press pound two on your telephone keypad. And I do see that we have a caller in the queue.
Go ahead.
Caller you are being muted. Please go ahead.
Uh, Gil Matthew. This is four.
Hi, Gil.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Gil. We missed you. Go ahead.
I miss you too. You're looking good. Anyway, I want to speak on the Public Works Measure R of Funding Agreement for the Transit Connector Project. And I'd like to get an oral report because it's between the city of Inglewood and the, uh, Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority to accept a reimbursement grant in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three million, seven hundred thousand dollars from the Transit Connector Project. Now, I need an oral report, brief as much as you can, with a background and to complete the measure R. This is concerning measure R. And it would clarify to the residents. That's for the one point six miles station for everybody to track this, uh, last mile gap between Metro Rail and the city. Now, we need understanding that with the, uh, project that extending it into the stadium and the arena, that who is gonna pay for that? And the question is, or the word on the street is, the residents are gonna pay for it. And that is unacceptable.
Gil, Gil, let me see. Did you say the, did you say the word on the street? Did you really say that? Did you really say the word of the street? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I heard that.
Uh, look, I use ghetto talk, okay?
Okay.
Uh, what I meant was the residents. The word amongst is misinformation.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that.
Well, I'm a street guy, you know. I'm from the hood, man. Been in the hood over fifty years, bro. Yeah, I know the drill, man.
I know, Gil.
And all people, well, you know the drill, bro.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
I know the drill in the hood, you know. I know all the gang members and that kind of thing. I know the brothers. And it's real.
Okay.
And all they need is mentors. The brothers need mentors. It's like in Inglewood. You'll be surprised how intelligent these guys are. That's why I'm so concerned about, about Vogel and his program.
Okay, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna, operator, we're gonna have to go to the next caller.
But no, if I've got some more time.
Operator, we're gonna go to the next caller. Yo, you got a minute at the end.
No problem. Moving on to the next caller. Your line is being muted. Please go ahead.
Oh, this is a very hard, but I have a non-agenda public comment, so forgive me. I, I, I don't know how to, like, detach myself and wait for that, so excuse me.
So that's okay. So just wait till the end and we have one minute for general comment at the end. Operator, next caller, please.
Very good.
All right, we do not have any additional hands raised in the queue at this time.
All right. With that, we'll, uh, close public comment and, uh, we'll go to the, oh, before we go to the agenda, uh, State Senator Steve Bradford is here. And, uh, we're gonna give him four minutes, more than the council gets, but he wants another minute. So we're gonna give him five because he is the senator. Senator, welcome, and it's so good to see you.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, and it's not that I'm the senator that I would want to experiment in. It's just that we've had a full year of accomplishments and it's hard to capture one year of legislative accomplishments in five minutes.
We've been watching you on TV, Senator.
But, um, it's like speed dating. I will do my best. Again, thank you for this opportunity to bring, as I've done for the eleven years that I've been in the legislature, update on legislation that, that I've not only authored, but has gotten signed by the governor. Uh, it was a lot of progress this year from budgetary standpoint, historical budget of over two hundred and sixty billion dollars with over a fifty billion dollar reserve. The state of California is moving in the right direction and doing great things. And it's an honor to represent the city of Gardena, I mean, Inglewood, I'm sorry, and the Thirty-Fifth Senate District. Uh, and the legislature has worked hard during this pandemic to address the needs of cities like Inglewood, Gardena, Hawthorne, Lawndale, you name it, to make sure that they have the resources that they need. And I'll just start real quick by those issues that impacted Inglewood directly. And I'm honored to stand here and say that I was able to secure with the help of Ms. Burke eight point five million dollars for the Market Street improvements, uh, six point five that I was able to muster, and the two billion that, two million, I should say, that, uh, Ms. Burke was able to get. So we have a total of eight, uh, eight point five million for Market Street improvements, a project that will make pedestrian space vibrant, more workable, and walkable, and inviting to the business and consumers and maximize the advantage of the Metro Crenshaw LAX line, which is a quarter mile away. Uh, just a few weeks ago, we broke ground on the Clipper Arena, a one point eight billion dollar project that is privately funded by the Intuit Dome that will open in twenty twenty-four and that will feature a team practice facility, retail space, and community space. And there's even negotiations right now and discussion with Cal State University Dominguez Hills to have a satellite campus there, so I'm excited about that. And I stand here as the proud author of the original bill, SB seven eight nine, that started the work of streamlining, uh, the construction and expedite environmental challenges to the construction of the Clipper Arena and, which will employ thousands of local residents and bring millions of revenues to the city of Inglewood. This year, I've had a very successful legislative session. And the governor signed seven of my bills, and we'll start with the first one. SB two, Police Decertification, better known as the Kenneth Ross Junior Decertification Act. Uh, this bill allows now a fair and transparent way to remove bad cops from the streets and help create better community policing, better trust within the community, and just a better feel for who we are and what we are in our communities. And just why Kenneth Ross? He was a young twenty-five-year-old African American who lived in a neighborhood and was shot less than two hundred yards from his current parents' house, running away from a police officer. And when I heard of the shooting and they told me the officer's name, I didn't know the officer because I've lived in Gardena all of my life, fifty-two years, and I've been on a first-name basis with pretty much every officer for the last thirty-five, forty years. So when I heard the name, it didn't ring true, only to find out this officer was transferred from Orange County Department after being involved in three questionable shootings there. Had this bill been in place then, this officer would not have been able to be employed by the city of Gardena. This bill corrects to misinterpretations and impediments of full civil rights using the BAN Act and bringing in conformity with federal law. It is unacceptable that officers can commit misconduct in one department, as we just described, and simply move to another one without repercussions. As we say, we need to end the wash, rinse, and repeat. It is unfair to the communities, it is unfair to the victims of police abuse, and most importantly, it's unfair to the men and women who put that uniform on every day and do their job in a respectful, honorable, uh, way by the book. California is able to revoke certification and license of doctors, lawyers, bad barbers and cosmetologists, even remove bad politicians. But here in California, we're unable to decertify police officers who have broken the law and violated trust. California now joins the forty-six other states that have a fair and transparent decertification process, uh, in place. This is about removing bad officers again in our state who are committing serious misconduct and breaking the trust between communities and law enforcement. Next is SB seven nine six, Returning to Property Bruce Beach. Property that was purchased in nineteen twelve by Willa and Charles Bruce, an African-American couple who simply want to live out the American dream, bought a piece of property, opened up a lodge, a dance hall, a restaurant, and a changing facility for African Americans in nineteen twelve to access the beach. Prior to that, it was only one other place, the Inkwell, up in Santa Monica, for African Americans to have beach access. These, this bill, I mean, this, uh, property was very successful from its start and only due to racism and hatred that the community start targeting this, uh, couple, burning their property, harassing the tenants. And after that didn't run along, the city used eminent domain in nineteen twenty-four to steal the property from the Bruces. This bill simply puts in place the transfer back to the rightful owners, the grand, great-grandson and the great-great-grandson of Willa and Charles Bruce. This is not reparations, but it's atonement for what was stolen. This is not a gift of public property because you can't gift back what was stolen from someone. And this family lost generations of wealth due to this. Next one is SB.
Senator, how much longer are we gonna be?
I will stop then if you.
No, 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 I don't. I, I just want to get some ideas.
I, 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 I've just got two more bills we're gonna go over and I'll be out of your way. Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're not in the way, but we're just, we're just trying to get an idea.
Three minutes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Determining Sentencing Reform. SB five, six, seven requires the court in criminal sentencing procedures only impose the upper and maximum terms for sufficient aggravated facts that are first considered by a jury. So again, we know historically African-American and brown people always get the upper, uh, uh, range in sentencing. This now allows the judge to use greater discretion and, and separate that. Criminal administration fees eliminates and reduces assessments and collections of administration fees opposed against people in the criminal justice system. These fees, uh, that are eliminated include, but not limited to, the cost of collecting restitution, installment payments, return checks, failure to appear in court, medical and dental cost recovery, certificate of rehabilitation, and sealing of a record. So we're just seeing removed debtors, uh, prison. And SB six five five Insurance Diversity, which expands diversity, allows more women, African-American, Latino, and disabled veterans to do business with our, uh, insurance industry, uh, sponsored by our insurance commissioner, Ricardo Lata. And SB six nine four Utilities Work Diversity, Diversity Workforce requires select your utilities companies to include in their wildfire mitigation plans how each will develop a diverse and equitable workforce to complete grid monetization and including Conservation Corps members as well as formerly incarcerated CDCR fire camp members who find it almost impossible to get a job in this industry, yet they put their lives on the line on a daily basis to fight wildfires. And last, Fair Place to Pay Act. Uh, SB twenty-six, as you know, I authored the original SB two oh six two years ago with Senator Skinner. This just allows us to move ahead of the NC two A and implement our law in California this past September and now includes, uh, community college athletes who now can monetize their name, likeness, and events. And we've seen hundreds of athletes already who have taken advantage of it since it's been in place. And just go over quickly budget allocations for the state. I was able to secure a hundred and forty million for the Thirty-Fifth Senate District. As we said, eight point five for the city of Inglewood, one point two million for the Cheryl Green Community Center in Wilmington, sixty million for Cal State Dominguez Hills, fifty million for Charles Street University, ten million for Martin Luther King Hospital, and, uh, another one point five million for the UCLA, uh, labor workforce that we hope will be named after the Reverend James Lawson. Uh, that will conclude my presentation.
And Senator, we want to thank you for your work and that eight point five million, which will help to revitalize Market Street, which at one time was the business district core of the city. And we wanted to end up being, uh, a jurisdiction that's in synergy with, as opposed to in competition with, the sports entertainment district. And that eight point five million will definitely be helpful. So on behalf of the council and the city, I want to thank you for your assistance in getting that set aside for the city. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for this opportunity to present, uh, legislative accomplishments for the Thirty-Fifth Senate District in the state of California.
Welcome.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's see. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Warrant register.
Move out.
Payment.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
City Council Successor Agency members and Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Buds.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to receive public input regarding the redrawing of city council districts' boundaries in accordance with the Fair Maps Act.
As the notice of the hearing has been given, time, form, and manners required by law. And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have you by any chance received any communications?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Um, Ayesha Thompson will give the staff report, City Clerk.
Well, let's stand by.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Uh, today I will be presenting to you all the staff report for, uh, the staff report to receive public input regarding redistricting. It's recommended that the mayor and council members conduct this public hearing to receive public input, uh, regarding the redrawing of the city's district boundaries in accordance with the Fair Maps Act. The Fair Maps Act was adopted by the California Legislature with the passage of AB eight forty-nine and took effect January one, twenty twenty. Under this act, the city council shall adopt council district boundaries that comply with the United States Constitution, California's Constitution, and Federal Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, using the following criteria in the listed order of priority and to the extent practicable. One, the council district shall be geographically contiguous. Areas that meet only at the points of adjoining corners are not contiguous. The geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in the manner that minimizes division. A community of interest is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of the effective and fair representation. Council district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents. Council districts shall be bounded by natural and artificial barriers, by streets, or by boundaries of the city. Where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria, council districts shall be drawn to encourage geographical compactness, in the, in a manner that nearby areas of populations are not bypassed in favor or of more distant population. Also, the members of the council shall represent about the same number of constituents. The Fair Maps Act requires cities to engage communities in this redistricting process by holding at least four public hearings subject to the following. One, the one being held today, we should have one, we should have a council, uh, hearing to allow for public comments before the draft map, or maps proposed are drawn. Number two, at least two public hearings shall be held after the council has drawn or drafted a map. And at least one public hearing or public workshop shall be held either on a Saturday, Sunday, or after six PM on a weekday. The city clerk has provided a few dates, tentatively with the approval of the mayor and council, such as October twenty-sixth, which is today, Saturday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. But again, it's upon the approval of this council if you would like to select those dates. Lastly, pursuant to Election Code Section two one six two two A three, the city must adopt its final map of the council district boundaries by April seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as the city's next regular municipal election will be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Adhering to the schedule above will ensure that enough time to adopt the final draft map prior to the April seventeen, twenty twenty-two deadline. This concludes my remarks, and I welcome any questions at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for that excellent report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, are there any members of the public that, um, wish to comment? Operator.
I do not see any members of the public in the queue at this time.
Well, the public comment portion is closed. So we have received public input and, um, we're moving on to the next item. Consent calendar, items two through ten.
Move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR one.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution amending the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget positions to add an administrative analyst to the Police Department Administrative Bureau.
This is, uh, Police Department here? Captain, could you just come and refresh me on this position? This is Captain Marie Di Renardo. I want you to know. I hi, I hired her onto the Police Department. All right.
So, uh, Mayor, we are here to talk about the administrative position, uh, change to the budget if we can recommend a change in the budget. We understand the budget went through in September and we just had a, um, upgrade position available. So in our fiscal administrative section, we've determined that we need this position in order to assist with creating the contracts, the, uh, staff reports for council, the RFPs, and any operational agreements that are, that the Police Department has during the year. It's an upgrade to the position, so it's not an entirely new position. And the difference in the pri, uh, the budget would be, the payroll specialist is a hundred and ten thousand with benefits approximately, and this new position would be a hundred and thirty-three approximately with benefits. And then right now, would, it would, the difference would be approximately twenty-three thousand that would cost us a little bit more, but we have the salary savings from the positions in the budget that we have not been able to fill. We also have salary savings in the, in that unit.
I, I just want to make it clear to the council that this is not an additional position to the budget. It's a, it's a reclassification.
Correct.
So thank you very much. I move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR two.
Staff report recommending award of, of contracts and approval of three-year professional services agreements for the ass needed professional engineering services project per proposal number RFP zero one six eight.
Move item one.
Second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR three.
Staff report recommending approval of Measure R Funding Agreement Number nine two zero 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 M R I N G I T C between the city of Inglewood and the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority to accept a reimbursement grant in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three million, seven hundred thousand dollars from LACMTA for the Inglewood Transit Connector Project.
Items one and two.
Second.
Before I, um, call for the vote, I want to answer Mr. Matthew that this two hundred and thirty-three million is actually two hundred and thirty-three million that became available to the city while I was chair of the authority, uh, where we were able to transfer highway funds to mass transit projects. And then that went to the South Bay, and the South Bay voted to give of the billion that was available, two hundred and thirty-three million, allocate to the city of Inglewood. And so this money does not come from, uh, Inglewood taxpayers directly. This is Measure R funding that will be realized over the next ten years, over the next ten years. And it's a reimbursement agreement at that. So, Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR four.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two budget in the amount of one million, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars to allocate funding for the Community Development Block Grant Cares Act Rent Relief Program.
Move one and two.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, A one.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two closed session items. The first one was a closed session item regarding the worker's compensation claim of hung wind. There's a request for settlement authority as to the worker's compensation claim.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, A two.
And I'm sorry, Mayor.
What's with the second one? Go ahead.
Yes, as to the second item, there was worker's compensation claim with Jonathan Rivers. Again, there's a request for settlement authority in that matter.
A move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, A two.
Thank you, Mayor. As to the city attorney's oral reports at this time.
Thank you, sir. CM one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. It's not often that I use my time to speak, but today I have an exciting announcement that I'd like to share regarding our social media department, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Last year.
I'm, I'm sitting there stunned already. I, I didn't know what you were gonna say.
It's all good. Last year, the city of Inglewood video on social media team led by Thomas Bun produced a sensational COVID-nineteen video, public service announcement that garnered the attention of national media outlets like People Magazine, BET, Yahoo, I mean Yahoo News, ABC News, Hip Hop DX, and others. The PSA was incredibly effective in communicating the public health guidance of wearing masks while the public, while in public to slow the spread of COVID-nineteen. After the video's viral success, I encouraged the team to enter the video in, for a Savvy Award, which is a national competition. The Savvy Award, Savvy Awards are gold standard among city and county communications and marketing professionals nationwide, and 3CMA is the premier network of local government communicators. For the past thirty-two years, the Savvy Awards have been champions of innovation and creativity. And out, and out of more than eight hundred submissions from across the United States, the city of Inglewood took home the Savvy Award for the Best Public Service Announcement and the Silver, Silver Circle Award for the Most Creative Activity, with the least dollars spent for their mask on COVID-nineteen PSA.
All right, yay. Go Inglewood.
Well, just a few comments. The, the, the raiders couldn't help provide us with some written comments, and a couple of them I want to share with you. One raider said, "This PSA is fun, creative, and catchy. The video shows, shows the possibilities of, are endless when a, when a community comes together for the greater good. City pride is at its finest. I watch this video and I see talent in all areas. Great job in making a controversial topic." Great job in making a controversial topic fun. You certainly hit the mark on this one." Another raider said, "Not only was the video creative, fun, and educational, but it was also very appropriate choice, given the demographic of the area. You managed to capture important information and condense it into a video that got the point across and made me smile." So, this is significant that the City of Inglewood has one of the best, because in my opinion, I think the opinion now of the nation, we have one of the best media and public communication teams in the nation, so I want to call out Thomas Bunn to say a few words. And Mayor, if you have the time, you know, in case the public has forgotten what the video looked like, it's a short video.
No, no, we definitely have the time, but already, what year did we hire you?
In 2011.
You know, this is the most you've ever said.
Well, I'm excited about this stuff, you know. Thomas is great, and these are the two awards here.
First of all, Thomas, come on up and congratulations. And so, you can tell us a little bit about your inspiration and how you made it happen and your crew, you know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, thank you to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Fields, for encouraging us to submit this project to the Savvy Awards. It was a great honor to be recognized amongst all of the nation's communicators and to be selected for the Savvy Award and the Silver Circle. I definitely thank my team. You know, I'm not standing up here right now, but it's a team of guys that are filmmakers, documentarians, photographers, and they're very talented, and they love what they do, and they bring their passion to work every day with them when we work, and they love this community. And so, this project came about because, you know, COVID was a very, it still is a very challenging time for our community, especially a community like Inglewood's, as we've been hard-hit by this. And we spent some time talking with business owners, residents, and, you know, a lot of business owners were in tears talking to us about how it just, COVID had ravaged their businesses. And we communicated day in and day out with the help of the Office of Emergency Services and Brian Walker and Crystal McLaughlin, and it was a lot of just sad news. And we needed something that could communicate the importance of wearing masks in public while doing so and lifting the spirits of our community. So, we came with the idea that, you know, Future had a song called "Mask Off," and we figured, like, why don't we take pop culture and flip it, and then make something called "Mask On" that can encourage folks to wear their masks in public? And so, we created a tune for it, and we went out and we helped with the assistance of the council, who helped us with finding local business owners, community residents, and everybody kind of just pitched in, and it was just this grassroots video that didn't cost us anything. It was just people saying, "Hey, I want to be part of it." We got local DJs, local graphic designers with Bobby Brimmer, local DJ Quest Coast from Inglewood. We had some local dancers provided by Brandon Rainey, and it was just an all-out community affair, and I thank everybody who helped us make it happen, and definitely thank 3CMA. And then, I might add as well, I really think, you know, I owe this council a great thank you, because you guys had the foresight to say, "Hey, we need to document this history." Mayor, you've been advocate saying, "We need to document all the things that are happening during this renaissance in our community." And so, you guys having the foresight have allowed us to be creative and to be able to represent this community with visuals, with photography, and with our documentary skills, so I thank you guys as well.
Thank you. I want to say two things. First of all, Deion, you know that Thomas lives in your district, and if it wasn't, he'd have to take such a pay cut, I'd worry about him running for City Council. I'm just seeing you very articulate, my man. And I would tell you this, that when we and the council agreed that we would start a video unit, we did it with a purpose in mind. The mainstream media was not capturing the nuts and bolts of what was going on in our city, how we were building ourselves for the future, and if it wasn't for you and your crew, there's so much that would have been lost that is part of history and now is here, and I want to thank you personally, personally, for the effort and care that you put into documenting the history of Inglewood. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask something, Matt. I just want to say that this is an example, because we have always, as the mayor said, we made a decision to have our own unit, and that was a very important step we took. But I want to point out how much you've added, because we always made an effort to do so in the past. Before you arrived, we used to contract out, and we did so at a cost, and we made a decision to keep you guys for the long haul, to basically buy the unit, and we spotted you specifically, and we spotted your talent, and I'm so glad we did. You were younger then, but you've evolved, and the truth of the matter is, is that, as the mayor said, your eloquence, it actually has started coming out in the videos and in everything else, so I congratulate you for everything you've done, and as you said, that step we took when we took it, Jim, was a huge one, and I believe we got criticized at the time. But the truth of the matter is, is that that was a great step, and you guys have added a lot to the city, so I thank you for that.
Oh, yeah. Thomas, he was against the grain.
Yeah, I remember that.
And he's a very talented individual, so thank you very much. Big hand.
Thank you.
Roll tape.
Roll tape.
You remember that, Jim?
Yes. I've signed an executive order mandating the wearing of a face covering in the City of Inglewood amid the pandemic.
We are now recommending that Angelenos use homemade face coverings when they are in public and interacting with others.
Mask on, we keep that mask on. When in public, yo, we keep that mask on. 2020, year that we advanced, but coronavirus threw a wrench up in them plans. Had to adjust and make it interesting. Give me six feet, that social distancing. Wash your hands. Protect your fam, and we'll be back soon as we can. We need the Rams, the Chargers, and the Clippers, too. We miss Fiesta Martin and Woody's barbecue. Essential servicemen and women, yo, we thanking you. A little longer, we'll be stronger, once we make it through. More COVID cases is a space that we just can't be in, so we embrace it till we overcome it, 'cause we champions. So, mask on, keep that mask on. When in public, yo, just keep that mask on. Mask on, we keep that mask on. When in public, yo, just keep that mask on.
Oh, look at him.
I missed another one. Right place, right time.
Oh, boy, that's great, you guys. And for those of you that didn't catch The Voice, you know, the rapper was Thomas, and he wrote the lyrics as well. Extremely talented.
I think we have a picture of Thomas accepting the award, too, if you wanted us to put that up.
Yes, please.
And Artie, he's like going crazy today. He's on fire.
Artie, I think this is the new Artie. There he is.
For the first time, I've lost my place now. Congrats again. Okay, so, CC, oh, yeah, CC, no, yeah, CC1.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to all of our residents that next Tuesday is Election Day. We do have our polls open as of our early day. Rogers Park is open from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM now. They're open on the weekends also, Saturday and Sunday, so you can go now and cast your ballots, also, or your votes. Also, our office, City Clerk's office, will be open next Tuesday from 7:00 AM until the polls close at 8:00 PM answering any questions. Feel free to give our office a call if you have any questions, and again, congratulations to our media team. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And speaking of the election, you know, I still, to this day, have people tell me they're being told misinformation about at least one of the measures, and that would be Measure I. Okay, so let me tell you that conclusively, this is not a property tax measure. It actually is seen on your escrow sheet as the documentary transfer fee that's been here forever, and it was 55 cents per thousand, and the new documentary transfer fee for a property that's sold for over $1.1 million is 1.75%. Now, if you sell your house, no, excuse me, if you transfer your house to a child or relative, there is no documentary transfer fee. There isn't one now, and there won't be one in the future. This will never affect your property taxes. Let me say that again. Not now, not in the future, not ever, and I just want to make that very clear. And of course, Measure H is the hotel occupancy, transit occupancy tax, and that will go up by one and a half percent, and that's added to each night of a room stay at a hotel. And of course, as everybody knows, they're building hotels in Inglewood now.
Mayor, you'd like to add, I know that everybody's getting their tax bill right now, and there's one that says unified on the bottom that's new from last year, that has nothing to do with anything.
Oh, okay, okay, and so, understand this, too. Whenever you get your property tax bill and you see that little breakdown, those are all items that the public has voted on at some point in the past. There was a school bond measure passed in 2011.
That's new.
And then, there's a new one that was passed last year or something like that, and that was, went to the vote of the people. The council cannot raise your property taxes. Let me say that again. The council cannot raise your property taxes. Okay, with that, we'll go to CSA2.
Yes, Mayor. Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 28th, 2021, October 5th, October 12th, and October 19th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor Agency members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, H2.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 28th, 2021, October 5th, October 12th, and October 19th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye. Adjourn the successor agency and adjourn the housing authority, F1.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on October 19th, 2021.
So, move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Finance Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye. Well, adjourn the finance authority, P1.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on October 5th, 2021, October 12th, and October 19th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
I'm a little sad, because, see, now we're caught up, and we won't have these anymore.
We'll just have one single one when they come up.
I'm very sad about this. Madam City Clerk.
Parking Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, JPA1.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 28th, 2021, October 12th, and October 19th, 2021.
So, move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, adjourn the parking authority and adjourn the JPA. There are no appointments to boards and commissions. Public comment, any persons wishing to make, to address City Council on any item connected with city business not earlier discussed on the agenda may do so at this time. It's one minute. Operator, are there any callers?
And just a reminder to the callers that if you wish to make a comment, please press pound two to enter the queue. All right, and we do have a commenter on the line.
Please, go ahead.
Please, go ahead.
I'm Ray Haller, trustee for our family trust, which owns a house on 118th Street near Yukon Avenue, District 4, Parking Zone 11, Inglewood homeowners for over 70 years. Two weeks ago, I reminded you that the parking permit program will not be applied to residents in some parking zones, which are granted an opt-in option, and the criteria for awarding the parking permit program opt-in privilege were explained in the public works staff report to the City Council and letter to residents specifically, due to these parking zones being farther from the stadium and Hollywood Park and having low residential density. I have driven through most of Parking Zone 3B, which has the opt-in option, and was surprised to see that it appears to be nearly all multifamily housing, in sharp contrast to my Parking Zone 11, which is nearly all single-family houses, thereby having a lower residential density than Zone 3B, which has the opt-in option. So, please do not force the parking permit program upon our Parking Zone 11 and grant us the opt-in privilege consistent with the criteria in the public works staff report and letter to residents. Thank you so much, and congrats on the Mask On video. I enjoyed that very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Operator, are there any other callers?
We do have another caller in the queue. Caller, your line is being muted. Please go ahead.
Bill Matthew, District 4. Mayor and City Council, the meeting was informative, and what we need is more of the same, where you can relate to the residents, and we need night meetings, night meetings for the residents to attend and listen to what's going on. We have, a lot of residents are concerned, and we, but there's no information. There's no information. I enjoy Senator Bradford, and I hope we have lobbyists and bring you guys up to speed and understand the state constitution, that Senate Bill 9 and 10 become effective in January 1st. So, I want this council to get up to speed on it, because it affects local government tremendously, and what they're doing is they're taking away the rights of local government, and there's going to be a lot of feedback on it, and it's up to you guys to get running and understand what's going on. When I say you guys don't know nothing, it's what it appears to me, because you don't say nothing, and you don't understand the state constitution. You've got lobbyists, so listen to Senator Bradford. He's giving you information. Do something about it. We have to maintain local control. The state is taking away local control. The real estate now, there's no ROI.
Gil, I was just going to see how long you're going. Okay, operator, next caller.
All right, we do not have any additional callers in the queue.
All right, then we'll close public comment. We'll go to council comments if there are any. Councilman Dotson, District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I want to do is congratulate Thomas Bunn and his team. That was a magnificent video. I wish there was some way we could put that on national TV, if there was any way possible, because that, first of all, it catches the eye of kids. If we can get the kids to buy in it, we won't have a problem with adults. So, congratulations to him and his whole team. Wonderful job. And Measure H and Measure I, I wanted to thank everybody who participated in my virtual meeting. I hope you got the information that you needed. I know the mayor gave it to you. I want to thank the mayor for coming out and spending his time with us on that meeting. So, I don't have to say nothing about COVID-19, has already been taken care of by that film. So, you guys have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you, Mayor.
George, you were on fire today. Fire. Councilman Padilla, District 2.
great community event. I want to just give a shout out to one of our veterans, District Two resident, who's celebrating his seventy sixth birthday. Happy birthday to Mr. Lee Robinson. May God continue to bless you. And please, next Tuesday and starting a month ago, get your ballots in, get them in. You know, they're mailed in, you can drop them in, you can go in person, whatever, but exercise your right to vote. We have two important measures that'll impact us here in the city of Inglewood, H and I. And we've been covering it, covering it. You know where we stand. We've done our best to diligence to get the word out. We've had community meetings, we've had Zoom meetings to try to give that information out there. So please, exercise your right to vote. Just a reminder, we will not be meeting next Tuesday because of the Election Day, nor will be meeting, nor will we be meeting on the ninth for Veterans Holiday. So we will be back here on the sixteenth of November. That being said, if you have anything that's pressing, we're all available for email, phone calls, whatever it takes. You don't have to wait till a council meeting to approach us and ask us about those things that are important to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Dion Falk, the first elected African American woman in the history of the city of Inglewood, which was incorporated in nineteen oh eight.
I love it. What an introduction. I love that. Thank you, Mayor. I know, right? So I also want to thank Thomas Bond and the social media team. They are amazing. I have been working to highlight small businesses in District Four. And so I've been kind of working with them and they are just an amazing, talented group of of men. And so they have definitely honored us and I know that they deserve that award. So congratulations again, Thomas and your team. You guys are amazing. I also want to encourage all Inglewood residents to get out and vote, exercise your right to vote. We have a very important election happening next next week. Measure H, Measure I, I want to thank District Four residents for coming out and getting the information. We were at the Senior Center last Thursday. It was an amazing event. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Butts. He always comes out and supports all of the council members' events. And so he was there and answered questions. And so we had a really great event and I think that our residents left with the information they needed to cast an informed vote. So I'm very happy that you took the time to come out. Also, we have, you know, Halloween is this Sunday and so all the kids are really excited. City of Inglewood is putting on a great event at Gravilla Park. It's one hundred East Manchester Boulevard and it will be happening on October twenty ninth through the thirtieth from six to ten PM. Halloween Spooktacular. So make sure you come out and celebrate, bring your kids and let them get some candy and have a good time this weekend. And then lastly, I also participated in the Dia de los Muertos event and I don't say it as good as Alex and Eloy, but I try. And so I, my family, we went out and we honored the event that happened at City of Inglewood. It was a great event. And my boys, they kind of asked a lot of questions and and tried to understand the the altar and so it was really good. And so I think that that's a spectacular event as well. And so I was glad to be able to get out there after church and go support that event. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morales, District Three, the dean.
Thank you. The going back to the Dia de los Muertos, I have to say, I mean, it's so interesting when, it's a great event at the Inglewood Park Cemetery. And I enjoy watching other cultures and I'm glad you mentioned your children, just kind of looking at it. It's one of my favorite things about how our culture kind of views death and how, you know, as long as you remember, you believe that they're still alive. You know, Disney even made that movie Coco, which which does a good job of exploring that. But in in the fact that we actually are celebrating it here and Inglewood Park Cemetery really pays homage to it. So thank you for that. The Hollywood Halloween Spectacular, I Spooktacular, I have to say, the the Parks and Rec Department did a great job last year during COVID handing out candy. I know they set it up real nice out there at Gravilla Park, right across the street. It's a quick drive through, it's COVID safe, and the kids really, really enjoy it so they, you know, hopefully you take advantage of that. And then I want to also talk about the election. And basically, you know, I I have to say, you know, we are up here and we all stand in one space. You know, the truth is, you'll find very few things that we all super duper agree on. And I personally am very supportive of those two initiatives and I'll tell you why. So many questions about how it impacts residents and all have caused confusion. The truth is, your property taxes remain unchanged. This does not impact them a lot. And both revenues are revenues that benefit our city and don't impact the residents at all. They can, the one transaction tax, that can be transferred over to the buyer of whatever the property is. And that's the only thing. The hotel tax that exists, that is going to be paid by our tourism that comes in and it's going to stay here and help us develop parks and help us pay our police officers and help us fix sidewalks. That's that's an amazing revenue stream. That's what I call it. Equally, the transaction tax for the real estate that you sell, that is a one time that you can pass on. It doesn't even have to impact you at all. And that equally stays here with the city of Inglewood. Those are two revenue streams that any city would love to have the opportunity to set up. We are finally putting them on the ballot and I'm very proud of that. I'm supporting it one hundred percent. Mayor?
And and to follow up on that, the reality is that our transfer fee is so much lower than Los Angeles, Culver City, San Miguel, Beverly Hills. This is four four dollars fifty cents per thousand. And these are funds that allow cities to do greater things. And the way that I I put this to the groups that I talked to was that as you grow and as you expand, you incur greater expenses. And very few people live in the same apartment that they moved into when they left their house. Very few people even live in the same first house that they bought. They buy a bigger house. The roof costs more to repair when it needs to be repaired. They used to cut their own grass. They have a gardener now. When there's plumbing problems, it costs more, bigger house, more elaborate. Remodel a kitchen costs more. Inglewood is undergoing a significant metamorphosis. And one of the most important things for a city is infrastructure renewal and improvement. Our city has gone from the former city of Champions with two pro teams, a racetrack that did forty three thousand people a day. We went down to being left with the sizzle and the big donut. And now, look at us, look at us now. We have the L.A. Philharmonic, we have three professional sports teams, Super Bowl's going to be here, FIFA World Cup, the Olympic Games. We're going to have to invest more. We're going to have to have more police. We're going to have to have more frequent street and sidewalk repairs because they're going to be used more. That's just a fact. And so what we've done is undercut ourselves by not staying with parity at other cities. And there are a lot of people investing in Inglewood right now, spending millions of dollars to buy property, commercial properties. And so these are the kinds of revenues that are going unrealized and we want to capture those. So this is, again, this is not going to affect your property tax bill. It is not a property tax. It does not affect you transferring your property to your children. And if you're fortunate enough to sell a house for more than one point one million, you can put it in the escrow instructions that the documentary transfer fee will be paid by the buyer. And I don't think that buyer who's willing to pay one point one million for the house you paid two hundred thousand for is going to argue at paying that additional fee. So with that, I want to again congratulate Thomas. This was another one of those decisions, as Eloy mentioned earlier, that everybody was critical about us starting a videography unit because we felt it was necessary to capture our history. Now, you see that you see the results. And I'm going to say, once and for all, one of the best people I ever hired was Captain Marie Di Bernardo. Very proud of her and what she's done in the police department. Thank you, Marie. And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Another fine job.